Good evening, welcome and thank you everyone in the audience for being here tonight. I call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order 7 o'clock on September 3rd, 2019. Please stand for the presentation of colored cards by the Eastern Montgomery High School Core Cadets.
Arms. Present. Arms. Please post the colors. Order. Arms. Forward. March.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. March. Left face. Forward. March.
School on my right, and Toni Shannon Amato from Eastmont High School on my left, and they will now read our mission, vision, and core value statements.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by creating a nurturing environment, positive relationships, and high expectations and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement, and lifelong learning and culturally diverse diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you for both of you being with us. The next item will be our adopting agenda. May I motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements.
All right, thanks. We've had a tremendous start to another great school year. A lot of wonderful things are happening in our schools. We have new programs. You just witnessed one of the new programs, and that's our Core Cadets. We have over 200 students that are now in the Core Cadets. Can you not hear me? Is that better? Okay. We have over 200 students that are in the Core Cadets, and they're having a great time, and they'll be presenting colors at every board meeting, first board meeting of the month, and at your football games, and several other activities as well, so we're just real, real proud of them. A few things to make everyone aware of, we are starting, is my mic not working?
No, it's stuck.
That's all right. Can y'all hear me?
It's the teacher voice.
My coach's voice. So, a few things. One, strategic planning has started. Hello. Hello. Oh, you just gotta turn it on. That's it. Okay. Help me with that button. All right. So, strategic planning process, our six-year planning process is about to begin, and the first thing that happens with that is a community summit. And we'll be having a community summit on September 24th at 6:00 PM here at the school board office. You know, community members are encouraged to attend that, and so you can go to our website and RSVP, but we'd love to have you a part of that process. It will set our visions and goals for the next six years. Just wanted to inform the board and everyone else that our 10-day enrollment this year increased by 126 students, and so that's a pretty big, another pretty big increase. And so it's great that more people want to live here and move here. I think that's wonderful. Of course, we will be talking some tonight about the capacity of some of our buildings that we're needing to expand with that. So with pre-K, that takes us over 10,000 students this year for the first time. Okay? Something else that's going real well is I've started for the first time traveling office hours through our schools, where basically I'm there at the end of the day and teachers can come and have conversations with me or any staff member about anything that's on their mind. And I've done that now at two schools, and it's been really successful. And most of what folks are coming to talk to me about are, a lot of it's how great things are going, and that's good to hear as well, or how we can improve things that are already going great. And so, just I'm excited about that as I continue to move throughout the different schools. I had the opportunity last weekend to attend Dialogue on Race. That was a wonderful event, and Ms. Franklin is a huge supporter of that organization, and did a wonderful job, and really enjoyed having dialogue with individuals at that event again. So, a lot of wonderful things happening, and we look forward to it continuing.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Our next item will be the fun part, I will call it, is the honors, awards, and recognitions. We always get so excited to have a full room those days when we recognize our students. Dr. Meyer?
Okay. Right. First, okay, first though, before we get to that piece, our student reps, if you'll provide a brief school report for us. Kushi, we'll start with you. What's going on at Christiansburg High School?
Okay, so we started our first-ever video announcements called the Blue Demon Bulletin. The football team and volleyball team won their first game last week. We have Club Fair on Thursday tomorrow, where we will be doing the Core Value Connected. We are starting our Community Service Day project called Project CHS. That's in the planning. And then our chamber ensemble are trying to sing at the foreign concert, so make sure everybody votes for them.
I'm trying really hard.
Please vote.
I think I already voted twice using different emails.
It's absolutely, yeah. We don't encourage cheating, okay? But, yes, go and vote for Christiansburg High School. They get to perform.
They will be performing, yeah.
And unbelievable, they, I mean, they are incredible. If you haven't heard their choir, unbelievable. And so, but you gotta vote for them. William Byrd is close to us and votes, and so, yeah.
I already have my tickets to see Warner, so we gotta be there.
Yes.
That's it.
All right, excellent.
Thank you, Kushi.
All right, Toni?
Okay.
Eastmont High School.
So, I want to start off with the way that they introduced the students on the first day, it was tremendous, great idea. Got a lot of feedback from not only students, but from teachers as well, that they really, really enjoyed the theme behind it. The students got more of a welcoming feeling back to the high school instead of the just show up, start another year.
Tell everyone what happened.
Well, the way they introduced it, the theme was Happy New Year. It was a new year, new school, wanted to start it off right. They had limos donated, their time, and they were parked in front of the schools, and students could get a picture in the limo. Actually got featured on my school's page. And they had the limo, there was even a red carpet, balloons, and then when you got inside, the teachers were all hyped up and excited. Some of them had noise makers, some of them were chanting your name as you walked by. It gave me a really welcoming feel to the high school, and I'm glad that I had it even my senior year, the way to start off my last one right. And then, Eastern Montgomery has been doing a power hour schedule, which our first two blocks are in the morning, our third and fourth are in the afternoon, and we have lunch from 10:55 to 11:55, and it's split up into halves, A and B lunch. During power hour, it actually gives students time to either go to clubs, catch up on some homework, or even just to chill with their friends and to catch up with their friends. Or there's even intramural sports and walking club. The weight room is open for anyone who would like to get some exercise. Power hour has kicked off really well this year, and just like last year, it's running well. We got kids active in clubs and activities all around the school. We plan on making a bigger student connection with the community with more clubs and possible activity, community-based activities and community service projects.
Would either one of you want to give any feedback on the new school lunch?
Haven't had it, but it's, everybody says it's really good.
Well, you need to have it.
I absolutely love it.
What's been your favorite so far?
Oh, man. Aw, jeez. That's really hard to choose, because a lot of the food has just been so much better this year. It is definitely improved.
That's great. Now, I've eaten at schools almost every day this school year. I even opened up my own account this year, so it's great. But the spaghetti sandwich is coming, guys. The spaghetti sandwich is on the menu for this coming month, and it is absolutely...
Spaghetti tacos. Spaghetti tacos.
Is it called a spaghetti?
Spaghetti tacos.
That's what it's called?
Oh, I don't know.
That's different.
Huh?
September 20th.
September 20th. Is it called a spaghetti taco?
Spaghetti grilled cheese.
No, it's spaghetti grilled cheese.
No, I'm saying we need to get spaghetti tacos. Have you not seen our Harley? Spaghetti tacos.
Okay.
Spaghetti grilled cheese.
We'll start with the grilled spaghetti first.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, both of you.
All right. Next, school presentation tonight, we'll hear from students at Auburn Middle School. Ms. Marshall, she'll come up to begin their presentation. And I love your new mascot.
I know, I love those t-shirts.
Thank you. We brought some for you. All right. Hi, thank you for having us tonight. We're very excited to tell you a little bit about Auburn Middle School and what we have that's going on. It's really exciting. As you can tell, we all have new shirts this year, but we have a short little video for you, and then each of our students want to speak a little bit about what makes Auburn Middle School special. I have to hit it? Okay, good.
Let's talk about music first. So let's say you're in a bad mood, in between class periods, something you like plays on. You can jam out and groove out to the music, and it can make your mood lovely today, on that day. And food, the new food choices are the best. Like, you can have more vegetables, more fruits, more everything. We have pizza two times a week, from Tuesdays and Thursdays, but this may be very, because Dr. Meyer might close the school on Tuesday or Thursday. Sorry to embarrass you. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooklyn Phillips. I am in 7th grade, and I go to Auburn Middle School. One of my favorite things about Auburn is the sports, because they give us such a wide selection of different things to do, and it keeps us physically fit and mentally fit. My second favorite thing is the end of the semester celebration. It really gives us a chance to unwind and to play games, and we get to do all sorts of stuff there, and I think everyone at Auburn thinks it's really fun. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Zachary McGlothlin, and I'm telling you things that I like about Auburn Middle School. I go to Auburn Middle School, and I'm in 7th grade. One of the coolest things that we have is the clubs selection. One of the things that I chose was FCA, which stands for Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And another cool thing that we have is lunch recess, which is whenever you finish your lunch, and it's nice and sunny outside, you can go out there and unwind until your next period starts.
Hello, my name is Turnhansworth. I'm a 7th grader at Auburn Middle School. Two of my favorite things at Auburn is that we have a swim team now instead of a swim club, and our teaching staff is really kind, and they're really supportive of everyone, and they have a relationship with every single student.
Hi, my name is Lauren Bedingher. I'm an 8th grade student at Auburn Middle School. One of the things that's different about Auburn Middle School is we have this matrix of successful, respectful, and responsible that we follow every day, and that is expected of us to follow. Just things to make us better students, just basic rules to follow, and if you follow the rules, you can get recognized by a teacher, and you can get a pass to the Room for Success. The Room for Success is just a fun room with games, video games, toys, coloring books, and cool furniture that you can sit in. Usually, it's after lunch or in eagle time. And another thing that we have is we have dances, usually it's about every like two or three months. We have an after-school dance, usually that's for about an hour and a half, and it's just a fun time for the students to go, listen to music, and dance, and have funs with their friends. Another thing that helps out with the dance is like fundraisers. We do fundraisers with the dance. We recently had a back-to-school bash, and that helped pay, some of the money went towards some of the 8th grade field trips this year. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us? Anyone?
Court members, if you have any questions. Well, I would like to thank you each and every one of you. This was a wonderful presentation, and you guys, so good at public speaking, and so excited about your school. That's congratulations. Any other comments, questions?
Nice to see all the different opportunities and activities, and you guys have a good staff there too, so I can tell. Thank you.
Thank you for having your time. We have a gift for you.
Oh, my goodness, thank you. I was almost going to make a comment. Wonderful t-shirts, how we can get one.
If you need to exchange sizes, just let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When I visit you next, in the couple weeks timeframe, I'll be coming with your t-shirt on. Thank you.
Everybody. All right, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for our honors, awards, and recognitions. I'd ask Ms. Whitaker to come up and help us out with that.
It's my pleasure to coordinate the recognition component of our agenda this evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Danny Knott, Director of Human Resources, to come and recognize our support staff employees for last year.
Good evening. It is certainly an honor to be here tonight to introduce to you some wonderful MCPS employees. The following folks were nominated to be our Support Staff Employee of the Year. We have a few that could not make it tonight, but I do think it's worth announcing their names and letting you know who they were. Lori Duncan is an instructional assistant from Auburn Elementary School. Charles Martin is a custodian at Kipps Elementary School. William Mathers is a custodian at Margaret Beeks. Joanne McDaniel is a human resource specialist in the human resources department. Jack Raffensperger is a custodian at Gilbert Linkus Elementary School. Susan Wood, an instructional assistant at CPS, Christiansburg Primary School. Sue Ireland is a custodian at Falling Branch Elementary School. Kelly King, an instructional assistant at Montgomery Central. Lisa Waldron, instructional assistant at BMS. And Jonathan Barnes is a bus driver in transportation. The following folks are able to be here tonight, and I'd like to introduce them. First is Priscilla Davis, cafeteria manager at Shawsville Middle School. Pam De La Hoya is administrative assistant at CHS. Brenda Guess is a literacy aide at Price's Fork Elementary School. Chad Jones is a head custodian at Eastern Montgomery High School. Jenny Liu is an instructional assistant at CMS. Vicky McKenna is an administrative assistant at BHS. Cynthia Pardes is a school nurse at Auburn Middle School. David Shepherd is a custodian at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. Jackie Snyder is cafeteria manager at CES. And Julie Wade, administrative assistant in finance. And lastly, I'd like to introduce to you our 2019-2020 MCPS Support Staff Employee of the Year, David Hodge, custodial manager. Stay right here, David. David has worked for Montgomery County Public Schools for 47 years. David's long career at MCPS exemplifies what it means to be a leader. From the dark early-morning hour inspections to responding to problems and emergencies late at night, and on the weekends, and holidays, David is a true 24/7/36 supporter of MCPS. That's Dan Baranato's statement. Steve Smith, warehouse manager, states if there is a title of Mr. MCPS, David Hodge would deserve it. He eats, sleeps, and breathes Montgomery County Public Schools. It is an honor to recognize David tonight. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like for Ms. Diane Naugh to come and recognize our Gifted Teacher of the Year.
Dr. Meyer, Ms. Whitaker, and members of the board, I'd like for Helen Fotinos and her family to come forward, please. These boys are at school early every morning, so now they have to stay up late at night as well. And we have other gifted resource teachers here, so I'd like them to stand as well that are here to support Helen. I'm here tonight to recognize Helen Fotinos for the Virginia Association for the Gifted, 2019 Teacher of the Gifted for Region 6. Helen serves as the resource teacher for Margaret Beeks Elementary School. She demonstrates the highest level of professional commitment and competency in her work with her students, parents, administration, and colleagues. Her positive attitude and her love for students is reflected in the outstanding quality of the instructional work that she does. Helen's advocacy is energetic and student-centered. She's always willing to try new strategies and projects that challenge her students. This year, she's helping to frame the ILEAD program curriculum in four of our elementary schools. She anticipates a depth of leadership skills developing within her students. Helen empowers her students to succeed, and I know they will. Thank you, Helen, for all you do for Montgomery County Schools. they will. Thank you, Helen, for all you do for Montgomery County Schools. I'm here to introduce Helen Fotinos. We call him Mr. Helen sometimes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Carl Pauley to recognize 2019 Board of Education Award Winners.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker and members of the board. Dr. Meyer, it's my privilege to be with you this evening on behalf of Ms. Wickham, who is the Director of Elementary Education. She's unable to be with us here tonight, to recognize three elementary schools. Three of our schools were recognized by the Virginia Department of Education for high student achievement or continuous improvement under the new performance standards. Will Ms. Slanka, Mr. Lewis, and Ms. Boyle please come up to be recognized? These awards represent the high test scores of students. Those scores cannot happen without the hard work of teachers and other staff members in our school buildings. We are proud of the dedication of all of our schools for their work in educating all students in Montgomery County. Receiving the Board of Education Highest Achievement Award is Gilbert Linkus Elementary School. As the name states, this is the highest achievement award that a school can receive. Congratulations to Ms. Slanka and her staff. Receiving the Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award are Christiansburg Elementary School and Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. To earn this recognition, the schools had to show significant improved performance for accreditation-related indicators. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis and Ms. Boyle and their respective staffs.
Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Mark Husband, to recognize our CTE State and National Champions.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer and the Montgomery County School Board members. Thank you for taking the time to recognize some of the outstanding achievements in career and technical education student organizations during the 2018-19 school year. CTE students in Montgomery County Public Schools competed across seven different co-curricular organizations last school year. Tonight, we are recognizing students that won first place at the state and national competitions for those organizations. To introduce the champions in Skills USA from Blacksburg High School is Kelly Showalter.
Hi, I'd like to congratulate and recognize your Skills USA State Champion in current events, Andrew Price.
Ms. Wyn Parker was unable to join us this evening. In her place, I would like to congratulate and recognize the Health Occupations Student Association, or HOSA, state champions from Blacksburg High School. First place in the HOSA Bowl went to Miranda Barnes, Tanvir Alam, Bavia Thalaski Kumar, and Stephanie Mendoza. If they are here, would they please come forward? First place in nutrition was also Bavia Thalaski Kumar, and first place in pathophysiology, Miranda Barnes. Many of these students were seniors last year and have since gone off to college and were unable to attend. To introduce the champions and future business leaders of America from Blacksburg Middle School, Ms. Pam Dalton.
Thank you for offering us this opportunity to recognize Blacksburg Middle School's FBLA Chapter. My first-place national winner, Henry Meyer, is not present today, and Henry Meyer was also a first-place state winner for Business Maths and Financial Literacy. First place in Introduction to Coding and Computer Science is Jan Hanzig Schink. And also unable to be here today is Theo Villanueva and Xena Abagian, which were a team event for critical thinking skills, and Keenan Smith, who was first place for elevator speech. Thank you.
Ms. Zara Radzai was also unable to join us this evening. In her place, I would like to congratulate and recognize the FCCLA National and State Champions from Blacksburg High School. Each of these students have graduated and are currently attending college out of town and were unable to attend tonight's meeting. The state star event winner with a first-place silver medal was Emma Cook in Recycling and Design, and the state and national star event winners, first-place gold medal Lucy Kong, Kalia Hanowski, and Dori Gilmer for Environmental Ambassador. To introduce the champions from our countywide First Robotics Team, Mr. Michael Culver and Mr. Preston Childress.
Thank you all for having us and for this recognition. First, I'd like to celebrate Preston. He was my student graduating 2010, and you've hired him to be the next CHS Robotics Teacher. So, thank you very much. With us tonight, we have Lauren Culver, Patrick Wheeler, Cresson Berry, and Patrick Holder. There's twenty-nine others. This is what we came up with tonight. Many, many have graduated also, and so we invite you all, any Monday, Wednesday, and night, come out to the shop in Christiansburg, door nineteen. Love to have you. Thank you very much.
The First Robotics Team won first place at the 2019 First Chesapeake District. That district includes all of Virginia, Maryland, and DC. From there, they advanced on to the World Championships in Detroit, Michigan. Before I introduce Stephanie Parker, I would like to recognize her accomplishments as a TSA sponsor at Blacksburg Middle School. The Blacksburg Middle School TSA Chapter won the Middle School Chapter Excellence Award, and Ms. Parker won Middle School Advisor of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Parker.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and congratulate our students. I have our national and state winners from our Technology Student Association competition. So, first place at the state competition is Stephanie Olgin, if you could stand forward for career prep. And we have a first-place team of An Ali, Jackson Lawrence, and Eric Midkiff for System Control Technology. And Isaac Payton, Larry Wang, and Ryan Zhao for Video Game Design. At our national competition, we have a first-place winner for System Control Technology, and that is Eric Midkiff and Christopher Wu. And the last student I would like to recognize was able to win the first-place state middle school Member of the Year, and that's Stephanie Olgin, if you could stand forward.
Thank you.
Our last CTE recognition is from DECA and Ms. Kim Radford from Blacksburg High School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing us to recognize our students here tonight, and I'm going to introduce mine to you. They have a couple things they want to say, and then I'll wrap it up. This is Ryan Castle, Josh Goldston, and Tate Pospashaw, and they are the Team of Gold, nationally certified and recognized winners for our school-based enterprise program.
So, hi there. I just want to talk to you about some of the things that me, Josh, and Tate accomplished this year. So, we were chosen by Ms. Radford at the beginning of the year to manage our school store, and that included making transactions with vendors, stocking our store with new products, and promoting different sales and events that our store had going on. And then at the midway point of the year, we had a fifty-page manual discussing all of the inner workings of our store, which allowed us to advance and get gold certification from National DECA, allowing us to advance to state and national competition where we scored a ninety-eight on our presentation of our school store.
Nice. And you can see why they did well, so I don't need to say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you all for all of your support for all of our CTE students.
Thank you. Mr. Carl Pauley to recognize our Seniors of the Month.
Thank you and hello again. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. It is my pleasure to present to you this evening, those who will be making these presentations. First up will be Mr. Chris Stewart, Principal of Auburn High School, followed by Dr. Tim Bainam, Principal of Blacksburg High School, followed by Mr. Shane Gwynn, Assistant Principal of Christiansburg High School, and finally, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Todd Lewis, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, members of the board, Ms. Whitaker, Dr. Meyer. It's my pleasure to present to you Auburn High School's September Senior of the Month, Chiana Spradling. I'd like to invite Chiana to join me with her family. Chiana's joined this evening by her parents. I would like to read a brief quote from one of our staff members about Chiana. Chiana is a very hard-working and dedicated student. She is constantly looking for the most challenging courses to take and continually displays a bright attitude. She is well-respected by her peers and oftentimes assists them with classwork and life. Chiana's been proactive in planning for the future, and we at AHS are so excited to see all that she will accomplish. Congratulations, Chiana.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. It is my pleasure to recognize as Blacksburg High School's senior, outstanding senior for September is Sarah Grace Hunter. She would come up. She's accompanied by her parents, Susan and John Hunter, and her brother, Stewart, and her sister-in-law, Emily. They would all come up, please. She has been characterized as professional, kind, and a driven leader. One of her students or one of her teachers said that Sarah Hunter is currently band captain of the BHS Marching Band and the principal oboist in the BHS Symphonic Band. She is a natural leader who leads by example and takes on her role with compassion and drive. She is reliable and balances a demanding academic schedule on top of leadership roles with the band, SCA, and activities within her church. Another teacher said, "She is simply a superhero in my book, and I know she will succeed wherever she goes." I present to you Blacksburg High School's Senior of the Month, Sarah Hunter.
Dr. Meyer, Ms. Whitaker, and members of the board, it is an honor and privilege to present to you the CHS Senior of the Month for September, Mr. Ethan Wilson. If Ethan and his mother and father, David and Christie Wilson, would please come forward to be recognized, it would be appreciated. Ethan participates on the CHS Cross Country Team, Indoor Track and Field, and Outdoor Track and Field Team at CHS. He is also a member of the National Honor Society, Journalism, Beta, FBLA, a student aide, and a member of the inaugural class of Corps of Cadets at CHS. Ethan's current class load includes all AP and DE classes, of which he currently has an A in every class at this time. He has earned varsity letters in cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track. He was a region champion last outdoor track season in the two-mile, and also earned other all-region honors in cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track. He was also a member of the 2019 3A State Indoor Champion Four-by-Eight Meter Relay Team and the 3A Indoor Track and Field State Championship Indoor Track Team. Ethan also volunteers for the kids team at Blue Ridge Church and the annual Huckleberry Hustle 5K hosted by CHS and the Christiansburg Recreation Center. And even in his extra time, he finds time to work and is employed by the Christiansburg Aquatic Center as a lifeguard. In the personal statements about Ethan, some of his teachers and coaches described him as simply a fantastic young man who acts as a top guideline for those who need to seek a positive influence. He is the embodiment of excellence and enjoys the process of working towards his goals. He has a passion for living that will go on to infect others who work near him, as he loves day-to-day life and guides others to value what life has to offer. There is never a dull day encountered with Ethan, as he always greets you with a smile and is willing to help in any manner that he can. His future plans is he hopes to receive a nomination to the United States Naval Academy and would like to enjoy the opportunity to continue his cross-country and track career if possible. Congratulations, Ethan. Thank you, guys. Thank you all. Ms. Whitaker, members of the board, Dr. Meyer, thank you for the opportunity to introduce the Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Katie Fay Woods. Katie and her father are invited to come down at this time. I could go on and on about Katie's accomplishments, but I cannot do as good a job as her English teacher, Daily Howard, did when she said, "Katie has always been one of my brightest students." Naturally, she's bright, as in she's intelligent, that's a given. But I mean that when she walks into a classroom, she shines. On classwork, she shines. Working in any group, she shines. In the tenth grade, she wrote an essay in which she extolled the values of friendship. In it, she stated, "I believe in true friendship. In life, there are so many tough things to go through, and without friends, many of those rough times would be unbearable." I have seen Katie be that exact friend to so many of her classmates time and time again. Sharing with them and being a great student also means showing up for people in the dark times. It's my pleasure to recognize Katie Woods as the EMHS Student of the Month.
Thank you so much. We'll now have a 10-minute break while our board members congratulate the honorees.
Our next item on our agenda will be public hearing on PPEA. We'll have comments during this time. Are restricted to the public-private partnership proposal that is being considered by the school board. And again, I have to remind that board does not respond to speakers during the public hearing. Before I call the person, sign up. I will let Mr. Krantz give us a little heads up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. If you recall, when we started this PPA process on April 30th of 2018, I'd been here all of two weeks. And we did it in a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors at Falling Branch. And the purpose of that discussion, what drove it, was that there was a need for us to do a new elementary school and a renovated slash addition at CHS. We estimated those dollars was about $105 million. County said, "We don't have the funding in place today to do that project." So, the intent was, what could we do, working between the school system and the county, to find funding to move forward? Because our needs were there and only going to get worse. And the approach was the PPA. When that was enacted in 2002, it was known that many public buildings were not getting done. The process was slow. The funding wasn't available. And so, the public, or the perception was, you're not getting the benefit of the private sector. And so, that's why the PPA came about. Within our policy and state statute, it says specifically, it's to cover a wide range of projects, meaning it's not limited to any one thing, and we'll see that in a second. It's to provide involvement, may provide the project to the public in a timely or cost-effective fashion, both of which are critical to why we're here today. Our needs at CES, CPS, and BEs are today. Their enrollments continue to go up. The challenges in their building continue to grow. We had, for example, just yesterday, a skunk that set off in one of the modular classrooms at CES, making that classroom uninhabitable today. Last year, about this same time, we captured and relocated 10. Obviously, they've come back. And we're dealing with that. But these are the challenges, having buildings that are old, having buildings that's not been renovated, having buildings that continue to age. The needs are there. And that brought us into the PPA process. When we began, when we got into the PPA process and we had the different meetings, we received from a company called PFIC out of California, a financing proposal only. Now, we say financing, but it was an all-encompassing proposal in that it proposed this. PFIC would provide the financing to a special-purpose entity. That special-purpose entity would issue the bonds. That special-purpose entity, working with the school district, would enter into a contract with an architect, engineering firm, and contractor. And the school system would have say into the whole design of the project, and then would lease that project from this special-purpose entity. Y'all approved in October of 18, the advertisement for that particular plan. In our advertisement, we specifically state, based on the advice of council, that we're soliciting a proposal for all services in a PPA, meaning construction, architectural engineering, and financing, which was consistent to PFIC's proposal, even though they were the financing piece, they had it set up as a complete entity. We received interest from Ballard Construction, Harris Construction, BC Ziegler, which is tied with Branch Group on the financing, the Branch Group, and then another entity called BWRA, which is BW Realty Advisors out of Washington, DC, and they were tied to Ballard. Ballard and Harris did not submit by the due date. We did receive from BWRA a complete proposal similar to PFIC. PFIC was traditional, non-taxable exempt bonds. BW was doing a taxable transaction, so a different approach, but same net effect. And then, we received a proposal from Branch, which was all-encompassing in that Branch would do the construction, RRMM, and OWPR, and Gay and Neil would be doing the architectural and engineering, and then they use BC Ziegler as their financing component of it. We evaluated those proposals and basically put the projects on hold until we learned when the construction financing funds would be available. We learned in the beginning of August, through Davenport, who presented officially on August the 12th to the Board of Supervisors, that they are proceeding with a bond issue of $30 million, plus the county is putting in $5 million. So, the total financing dollars available for construction or renovation of CES, CPS, and BEs is $35 million. That project, we're working closely with the county. We're projected to go to market October 9th. The bonds are projected to be available on October 24th. So, come November 1st, which was the schedule we presented at the last board meeting, or two meetings ago, those funds will be available. And it's important, since those funds are going to, the bonds are sold, interest is accruing. And it doesn't do us any good to have $35 million sitting in the bank, just waiting to be used. And so, the intent is, how do we get our project going quicker? And so, there's two different types of construction methodology. You have what's called design-build, and then you have what's called design-bid-and-build. Under the design-bid-build, which is a more traditional public financing-type program, we would have to go out, contract a design firm, do the complete design, and the better we do the design and draw up the construction documents, the better the bid numbers will be, in that they'll be closer to reality. The more things you miss, the more change orders you have, and then you've got to have a large contingency in your construction numbers in order to make sure you stay within those dollars. The design-build gives an opportunity for the public entity and the private sector to work together. In this particular case, it would allow us, where we've done some design work on a high-level conceptual basis, and you've seen that in attachment to your memo. But it also allows us, working with the contractor, to make sure that what we're proposing and discussing fits within what can be built and all fit within the budget. Whereas, when we do a design-bid-build, we would submit the design on the street, we'd get the bid docs, we'd evaluate the bid documents. If they don't match our pricing, then we've got to scrap it, value-engineer, and then go through the whole process again, which could take a substantial period of time. So, this what's got us here tonight, in that we, as an administration, believe, and it's a little bit different than what I've proposed in the memo, is to proceed toward a comprehensive agreement. And remember, nothing's official until that document gets approved and signed. Okay? There's no liability legally, financially, of any kind, until that document does get assigned. Is to continue to proceed, working with Branch and our council, Brad King, their council, being Jeff Born in-house, and their outside council, on getting a comprehensive agreement that we can then continue to keep y'all abreast during your meetings, with the actual vote hopefully being on October 15th. Our goal, as we showed in our timeline, is we want to be doing site work as quickly as possible, and definitely want construction to be going on, on or before July 1st, which then in 12 months, we should be able to take occupancy of our two main projects. We are, as I've just now admitted, CHS. CHS, as you noticed in my memo, is dependent on when construction dollars are available. Holding off on that doesn't hurt the CHS project. Okay? I could go out today, do a bid for architectural services, and begin the process of the design, which is what we would recommend doing. And then, as we zero in on that conceptual design, then we'll see how we're doing with CES, CPS, and BEs, and then make the appropriate decision on the best course to make sure that project, CHS, takes place in a timely and the most cost-efficient manner. The challenge with CHS, and please keep this in mind as y'all consider this, right now in this community, our construction inflation's running 5%. If we were sitting in Richmond, they're running closer to 12%. On a $35 million project, that becomes a substantial sum of money that we're adding to it. And that growth occurs on top of each other. Picture CHS, we project to be $70 million. That inflation's a real number, too. So, I think that gives you kind of, I hope I've covered everything.
I think you did. And board members, we're going to go to the public hearing, and then we have a discussion session under the business meeting for us to ask questions, Mr. Krantz. Thank you, Mr. Krantz. The individual sign-up is Mr. Jack Bulls. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jack Bulls. I'm a resident of Montgomery County, 2009 Craig Creek Road. I am here this evening representing two separate interests. First, as a tax-paying citizen of Montgomery County, and second, as a construction professional with over 32 years of experience in the Roanoke and Nubiravallies. I've been involved in varying capacities in construction of over 40K through 12 schools, five of those in this county alone, including the last major project in this county at Falling Branch Elementary School. My experience in estimating billing delivered these projects is near unmatched in the region. For the record, I'm not against anything that you guys are talking about within relation to Christiansburg Strand. I believe the concepts are good. I applaud the school board and the administration for trying to make these long overdue projects a reality for the staff, the parents, and children of Christiansburg. To be clear, I oppose the use of the PPA method of procurement. For these projects in particular, the three elementary schools that have been lumped arbitrarily into this PPA proposal, with little competition that was instituted along the way, from what I can see in your documents that are online. This process seemed to have started about eight months ago, when the change occurred with redistricting, where the need for a new elementary school didn't need to happen. You're reevaluating and going to renovating the three schools. This approach is not in the best interest of Montgomery County Public Schools, nor the county taxpayers. The PPA is an alternative form of procurement, which neither delivers the fastest, lowest cost, or the highest quality. The PPA is a law and a method of procurement was designed to allow two things, like you've already heard, to allow equity to be placed into a public procurement by a private sector, in other words, private financing. That element's not being used now, from what I can tell. And the second, and the only other reason for choosing the PPA is to allow the private sector to share the risk of construction related to either cost, schedule, or other elements. This risk must be significant and have clear measures of success and failure for which the private sector participant is at risk. This element does not appear in the proposal. So, why are we using it? I'm not only saying that, I'm not the only one saying publicly that competitive sealed bidding is the best method of procurement in public agencies. In 2016, the Virginia Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission, one of the best-known and most respected college review commissions in the country, agrees with my assertion. In their report, which I have, it states clearly that competitive sealed bidding is the only method of procurement that delivers best quality and lowest cost. The study also affirms that alternative forms of procurement do not allow for the lowest cost to be realized by the owner. A current example is playing out in the city of Richmond.
Your time is up, Mr. Bulls. If you want to finish your sentence or your tote.
Okay. A current example playing out in the city of Richmond is three projects that are over budget, using an alternative procurement, compared to 15% cost increases that have been reported and compared against other schools in Chesterfield and Henrico County on the traditional design-build method.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any other individuals sign up, so at this time, our public hearing on PPA is closed. And the next item is our public address. But I do not have anybody sign up to address at this time either, so our public address is closed as well. So, and I don't see any consent items. So, we don't have consent agenda to approve either, so I will continue paying our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
Sumo. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. The next item is approving our, acknowledging our financial summary report. May I have a motion for that?
Sumo.
Second. Any questions regarding that? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our financial summary reports. Next agenda item is our business part of the meeting, and I will start with board member reports. Any board member would like to take the lead, looking left and right.
Sure. I'll start real quick. I did have a visit to Harding Elementary this past month, and also got a tour of the new modular units, which I think, you know, look pretty good and certainly have some advantages, I think, over some of our previous modular units, to say the least. And I think the staff and the students there, I think, are pretty happy with that solution, which I think is good, since it's probably going to be there for a while. And had a good meeting also with Mr. Sizemore. I also, today, had a long discussion with Tommy on the PPEA stuff, but I guess I'll save that for when we talk about that, and then the usual email fires, I guess. Well, I shouldn't say the usual, but we did have an unusual amount of email fires, I think, to put out this past month. But that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other board members like to continue?
I've got a good one.
Sure.
I just want to remind all of our educators that, of course, the educational foundation grant cycle is open, and we have received our first application. Shout-out to Pam Earls at Harding Avenue Elementary for being our first. But it is open until October 7th for the electronic, and then October 9th for the signed paper copy to follow that. And just encourage everyone to apply. We have a guaranteed $30,000 this year available, so $10,000, up to $1,000 per grant.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
As Dr. Meyer mentioned, the Doggone Race Summer Summit was last Saturday, or Saturday before, anyway. So, we had several of our A students, former students from Montgomery County, who put in some extra volunteer hours and did a presentation for us. That was just absolutely wonderful. So, that opportunity that has been given our students in Montgomery County is going to benefit this county and our students in so many ways that it's just can't even explain it. I get so excited and enthused with these students. So, that was just wonderful to see them.
Any other board members looking?
Yes. My daughter started high school this year, so I was, yes, unbelievable. So, I was able to attend the freshman orientation at Christiansburg High School, which was great. They did a fabulous job. I've also went to a couple of other orientations, to a couple of other schools, and just want to commend them on what a great job they've done. And I heard somebody was giving high fives at Eastmont during the red carpet limousine pool up there that day. So, I thought that was an awesome thing that you guys did, and I could just see the excitement in the kids everywhere I was able to attend. So, that was, that made me feel good. Also, I thought it was nice to see that the Montgomery County was mentioned in the Virginia Daily Education News on our Corps of Cadets program. I noticed that in an email. They don't know it, but I secretly have been in and watched some of the afternoon activities. They don't know it, but I secretly have been in and watched some of the afternoon activities. They've been outside because the weather has been so nice. I've watched them march, I've watched them do, they were doing something on a rope the other day. Anyway, the kids looked like they were having a fabulous time. They looked like, it looked like everything was going great, so I was glad to see that. They look like they're really happy to be there. Glad to see that, too. Had heard a lot of good things about that, too.
I've seen, that's a one man bridge.
Is that a one man bridge? Now I know. Now I can tell my husband I know what a one man. Also, hearing continuous good things about our lunch program. I've heard from parents, I've heard from kids, super excited. Lunch is yummy, it's awesome, they love it. So, just wanted to throw that back out there again. And aside from being on the school board, I'm also a member of the Christiansburg Lions Club. I just wanted to say that starting next week, we are going to be doing our site checks in the school for the kids for their vision with our spot machine. I'm gonna be helping out with that as much as I possibly can. So, that's a great thing that this club that I also am in are able to do for our schools. It helps the kids who either aren't able to get to an eye doctor or can't get to an eye doctor, make sure that they don't have any sight problems going on. And if we can, we can detect that early because we all know that that could impact learning. So I'm very excited to be able to volunteer and assist with that this year. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a board report, 'cause I think it's gonna be here, you know, since they kicked me out of the beach.
But, anyway, I do want to share, I have a young lady that, well, she's not a young anymore, but, a lady that I went to school with passed away last week. And her son came and got a haircut, and it was really sad. But, through the haircut, I got to share with him, I asked him, he's a senior at Auburn, and I said, you know, what are your plans? What do you want to do? And he said, well, I want to go to New River. And he hadn't heard about the ACEs program. And I have to say, I was so proud to be able to say, this is what you need to do. You know, if you can't figure it out, or get somebody, you come to me, and I will make sure that you've got the information that you need. But it just, I was so proud to be able to do that, and I just want to thank everybody that, that has any involvement in that program and keeping it going, 'cause it just, that was, that was a, a long, meaningful haircut. And it just, I felt like it, it really, and I wrote it down, and his grandmother had brawd him, and, you know, it gave, it was almost like a light at the end of his tunnel. When he left, he had a hope and faith. So, it just, thank everybody that's involved with that program.
That's great. Thanks for sharing this. And my August started with, I think, August 1st, with new teacher orientation. I welcome our new teachers. That was always so good to see, all the new and, new to the, our school system, not necessarily new to the teaching career, or, or some of both at that time. And then I attended the convocation, and fabulous music, food, and playing around, that was great also. And stopped by Harding, Margaret Beeks, Price's Fork, and Kipps Elementary School orientation that morning. And, of course, I helped first couple days at Harding Avenue, translating a little second grader from Turkish to English, so that, that was a lot of fun. And then I also attended our first mental health advisory council, and basically the overview is, we look what we have in place, and then also staff and student mental health days. The policy is drafted on that, that they can take days, or are we gonna point them out where in the policy that is covered? And we are extending our offer to the community regarding youth mental health first aid, which I highly recommend since I am trained. And then exploring the possibility of having youth mental health first aid for teens, which is provided by Lady Gaga Foundation, and it's very new, only few school division around the country, and it's relatively expensive, but our staff is looking into if we'll be able to provide that, so that will be teen to teen help, and then directing the friends to the help they need in case they need. And, and then I also attended Governor's School School Board meeting. That was their first of the school year, everything started well. Only thing was, they may change, or they may have to look at what else is available. Their summer camp numbers were down, and they, they attributed to the, a lot of conflicts and a lot of other good camps happening in the school divisions that they have to try to avoid next time around. So, that will be my, my reports, and we are ready for PPA discussion.
Right. So, Mr. Krantz has come back up. He's here to answer questions you might have about volume one of the PPEA proposal. We will discuss volume two in closed session tonight, and present a draft, a comprehensive agreement during closed session on September 17th, and again on October 1. We hope to have a comprehensive agreement for your approval on October 15th. Mr. Krantz?
Any questions? Y'all have heard my speech.
So I'm gonna speak up and fill you guys in on what, what we talked about a little bit today, and what my concerns were and where I'm at right now on this. But I did read the, the letter that, that was out last week, and I guess one of my, one of my concerns on, well, one of my concerns on, on this process is that competitive bidding. And when we first started on this, we had the financing rolled into it because we didn't think we were gonna, we thought that's the way we had to do it. And then, of course, we got new information from, from the county that we didn't have to do it that way. And so I did express some concern on, on the fact that we, you know, if there were somebody who couldn't provide the financing, would they have even, you know, bid on the project to begin with? So, somewhat of a concern, but I would also add that, you know, Mr. Krantz said, you know, we need those buildings today. I'd say we needed them four years ago, so there, I, I don't think we can overstate the time factor on this. And so from that point of view, and the fact that, you know, Branch did give us a complete proposal, and the fact that, I think that, and you clarified this, I think, tonight, that any, any other company could have submitted a proposal for any single or combination part of those three things, the financing, the design, and engineering, and the build. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. The, the public notice that went out, okay, that was sent, in one line says, this proposal is for the financing, design, and construction of a new 750 student elementary, because we were talking then about a new elementary, and a 1,400 student high school. So that's what was published, on both the state procurement site plus other national sites.
Is, is it understood, though, from, from the companies that would be bidding, that they would have to provide all three of those aspects?
No, sir.
Or any one of them?
They could have provided any one of, and if they, and if they would have contacted us, we would advise them, you can submit whatever you believe was in your best interest.
So I think, given the time factor that we have here, I'm very much for moving forward with the PPEA on, on the elementary schools portion of this. What, I wasn't as sure on, on the, on the high school, why we were rolling that in right now, and I think is, you know, as the, kind of the same, kind of the same concern. I mean, in the case of the elementary schools, I think we provided ample opportunity for other bids. I think, we do have more time, I think, on, on the high school side. And so, I, I called, I talked with Tommy about this today, about what advantages there would be to, to rolling it in now versus maybe waiting until the future, until maybe we have a better idea of what, when the money's gonna be available, and what it is that we want to build. So I'll let you maybe talk to some of that, but where I'm, from where I sit now, I, I don't see any reason to roll the high school into the PPEA currently. I don't think it buys us anything right now, and so, so as far as the, the competition, and I think the gentleman who spoke, I think, spoke, spoke to this point, you know, I would probably, you know, agree with that. If we don't have to do it, if we don't have to do it this way, from a timing point of view, you know, I, I think there could be a benefit to us to get something that's a better match, to give maybe something that's better quality, maybe a better price, when it is, you know, time to do it, to actually go to construction on that. So, that's, that's my input on this.
And let me say that, you know, I agree, I agree with you, that, you know, the elementary schools, we've been placed in a position to have to get it done now. We can't wait. And so, moving forward, you know, as we planned, I think is the appropriate action. However, the high school, the timeframe that's been laid out by the county when we received the funds, would match the timeframe for a design bid build. It, just like, you know, we could do it through the PPEA, but it actually, you know, when we can do the design build, build, why, why not? Because we are, it will, it will probably time out to when we actually, after we go through the steps, we get. Well, I mean, the design we've estimated is 18 to 24 months. The county has indicated that they would have, they would probably go to the bond market in two years. Roughly. So 24 months. Twenty-one would have the money, which would be in line with. When we're ready to do our site. Right. Which we could bid that separately. Then we can do the, do the rest of the construction bid, so we could be doing our site, then bid out the rest of the construction, get those in, and as soon as we finish site, construction could roll right behind it. So we can make it all seamless, for lack of a better term. If we did this, we would want to, you know, for CHS, go ahead, go ahead and start immediately on finding the design, finding who that architect would be, and then we would, you know, send out, you know, proposals for architects to submit, and to, and to, to actually, for us to actually choose an architect. And I would even recommend, you know, have the architects come in, and then actually, you know, we'd have a committee of folks, it would obviously be us, and then some folks at the school level, and, and probably go and look at some of the schools that these, these architects have designed as well, and to, to be part of that process, and then go ahead and make that choice. Before you know it, then they would start having community, they would actually lead the community meetings as to what Christiansburg High School would look like as we move forward, and it would, it would take the time that we need to get to the point where we actually have financing.
So, I have a couple of comments. One is, that doesn't mean that we're, we're not gonna move forward with the planning of CHS, right?
It means we are moving forward with the planning at the same pace.
I meant, we're not gonna stop moving forward, because we're taking it out of the PPEA discussion.
I would imagine we'll be on the street with the bid within the next two weeks.
Okay.
We could send it out that soon.
And the other comment I wanted to make, which I disagree with a little bit on the bidding process and getting the best product for the bid, I know for a fact, in many years of, of dealing with the construction world, that there are construction firms that bid low, and their quality work is, you know, average, not great, but average. And then there's all kinds of change orders that bumps up their price, because they knew they bid too low, and they knew they couldn't do it for that amount. So you don't always get quality.
And my concern is, that's one of the reasons, I mean, I've been around long enough to see that we've done design, bid, build, and design, and we've had good, I mean, we've got good schools. But one of the reasons we chose to do the PPEA project for Auburn and, and Blacksburg was so we could be more involved, because some of the, some of the, the material that we got back as far as different firms to look at, and, and different groups to look at, some wanted to literally put up metal buildings, and that would have been the lowest bid. And if we were doing design bid build, we would have to take the lowest bidder, and...
No, we don't.
Okay. I was gonna say, if we can, I mean, that was, that's my concern, because that's kind of how it's always been.
For one, these architects, let me say, these architects, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna find a quality architect. Their name is on that building, and...
For years.
For years, and that design.
And, and we've gotten, and seen, and had award-winning schools, so I don't mean to disrespect that, but those are my concerns with doing that, is, okay, well, we're gonna make sure we do the best way, but then, you know, when it gets down the road, well, you know, we don't, we don't have the time, or we've got, we've got plenty of time, so we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, we'll just have to take the lowest bidder, and you get what you get.
At the end of the day, the, the school building belongs to MCPS.
Right.
And it's gonna be an MCPS building as well as the architect's building. We control that as MCPS, okay? And so if we control it through the contracts, through the process, through the selection, we can ensure we get what we want. It doesn't have to be the lowest bid.
Okay.
Okay?
As long as we can guarantee that factor, that's one of my concerns.
You can do it, the way you do it is in the way I evaluate the bids.
Okay.
Okay? So for example, one criteria could be your experience. So say we're redesigning Christiansburg High School, let's just pick it, and it's 185,000 square feet. So give me your experience renovating Christiansburg High School. So you gotta give me a hard one, for example, we can go to that school, we can see it, we can touch it, we can talk to their team, we can know all the ins and outs that, that take place. And so through the grading that we give them, if you didn't do a good job, you're gonna get dinged on your grading sheet and you won't make it to the final round.
And experience from what MCPS has dealt with, too, because, you know, we've had a lot of these, obviously, construction firms come in and do stuff for us, and we can look back and see how many put in change orders, and what the amount of those change orders are. That's gonna tell us a lie as to how those people bid.
And that's part of the whole evaluation process.
Having been through the PPEA process on Blacksburg High School, it has just as much risk as the design to build. It might be in a different place, but we had change orders, and we spent that first summer downsizing that building because it had been overdesigned by the architects and didn't come in at the price. So it's really, it's more a matter of, the real reason we did it like that, and the reason we're doing it here for the elementary schools, was the time factor. We needed, we needed it done several years ago.
The key here...
And we don't have that on CHS, we have time to go through.
But, but the key, the key, though, in both projects here, will be, we have to stay within the dollars. Yes, exactly. Okay? And that happens by the district driving the boat on the dollar amount. And that's what Dr. Meyer pays me for.
And the advantage of having the design first is then when you go out for bid...
The better the design, the better the number is. If you got a weak design, or it's incomplete, then you're gonna have change orders. So that's the advantage of this.
They both have advantages, and they both have risks.
Because we'll have a full design, correct? Yes, sir. And we oughta better get good numbers on that full design. Shame on me if we don't.
Yep. So I agree with Mr. Chabaka that, you know, I like the idea of the PPEA for these projects, because we needed them yesterday, but since we have the time, we should take advantage of that for CHS.
And let me be clear on what I was saying. I wasn't saying, I wasn't necessarily saying that we have to do the design bid, bill.
But we have that option.
What, yeah, what I'm speaking to is whether or not we basically go in with the, with the, the one complete bid that we had with Branch on all of these schools and CHS versus we separate the elem, we do the elementary as one contract or negotiation, and then, and then we do, you know, we do the high school separately. And, and part of what I was talking about with getting a better product is not necessarily just in the quality, because to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had, you know, we haven't had significant quality issues with the, the schools that, you know, that Branch has built for us in the past. So that's not what I'm talking about, but I'm talking about that time factor, that when you have the time to actually do the design right and get some feedback from, you know, from the school, from the community, you end up with just a better product that, that fits your community better, fits your school better, fits your, your staff and your student and the needs better. And that's, I'm speaking at a very high level here on just separating the elementary from the high school. That's all.
I guess, I mean, being the one that seemed to scream at the top of my lungs for years about this, I don't know that I expected them to be together anyway. I expected them to be two separate entities because of the financing measure, so the thought of, hey, this is all gonna be a stretched-out-long-one-piece-of-paper here, I, I never thought that anyway. I always assumed that it would be two complete, separate processes. As we are getting the finances a little quicker than we thought, trust me, nobody understands more than I do how horrible it is and how in much need that the elementary schools are, and as a taxpayer of the town and the county, you know, I, I'm all about, for me, understanding and, and, I guess promoting the idea of the remodeling of the three, because I think all those students deserve and need something in those schools, so, but I always thought they would be separate. I don't think I ever thought they would be together.
And that's why the administration tonight is, we've, and I just didn't get to pass it out, we're asking that, on the memorandum you received, on page three, your second paragraph from the top there says, "In addition," and that line references CHS, "subject to wind funding." We're, we're saying, strike that sentence out of our memo, so we're pulling... wind funding. We're saying, strike that sentence out of our memo. So we're pulling CHS from the plan. We begin immediate design work, as we talked about. And at some point, you can see what the economy's doing, you can see what the market's doing, we can all see what our construction's doing. And then you could make, make a better informed decision. But we need to do the design and get that done quickly.
I agree.
And correctly. And it's going to be a time-consuming process. And so both Dr. Meyer and myself believe firmly that our best course of action is to do that with CHS. Don't commit now on how that construction will go, okay? But in the PPA, and what we're proposing is CES, CPS, and BES, and just those three, tonight. You always have the option, under the agreement, to add any, you can add any project to it. You can add any project to the comprehensive agreement, once it's executed. So if there's something that we're not even talking about tonight that comes up, you could always add that project to the program. That's what the law allows. You're not restricted.
As long as the law says that they come after CHS, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am, I understood. I understood that very well.
As long as that's the law.
I understood that very well.
And I think my question will...
I've learned it.
And I think my, my, not the question or comment, will be like Ms. Graham's, taking the CHS out right now is not changing the timeframe. We're still moving on, on the timeframe we set. So as long as nothing slows down on the rolling ball, I'm, I'm good.
Dr. Meyer won't let me let it slow down at all.
So for me, it was, what are we doing, when I got the memo? So when we did CHS, not CHS, BHS, and Auburn, the advantage with Auburn was, there had already been planning going on, and design going on. So when we got to the finished product, we didn't have to go through everything we did at Blacksburg, because there was, you know, folks had already given input, we had looked at what we wanted out there, and it went a lot smoother. So hearing the discussion, I'm like, I'm more at ease, because I was not at ease when I came in. Because like Jamie, the law is.
Yes, ma'am.
So I can support, you know, pulling back with CHS at this point, and moving in a more comprehensive way, so that we're including the community, getting more input, as to exactly what that's going to look like.
And we'll be doing that with CES, CPS, and BES.
Right. But we'll have more time.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that, as we all know, the high school is the high school.
It's going to be a more difficult, a challenge.
Yes. And with, anyway. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that, as long as the law is the law.
All right.
If...
And we're staying within the budget that we proposed to the board of supervisors.
Yes, ma'am.
And could we also use a different language than pulling back?
Yeah, I agree.
Because I don't want the community...
We're just separated.
I know what will be said tomorrow morning.
All right. Let me say this. Even if CHS was in the PPA, you know, so we signed the comprehensive, y'all signed the comprehensive agreement October 15th, you still would have a design period of 18 to 24 months.
I understand that. But when you use that term, pull back, I know what's going to be said.
We're not pulling back.
We're not pulling anything back.
But let's don't say that, though, okay?
We're separating.
Because you understand where I'm coming from.
We're separating.
Separating the two.
We're separating.
Separate types of funding. I don't care how you want to say it.
Right.
But do not say, we're going to push this back, we've got more time.
We still have two processes going.
In fact, you can look at it like this. We're going to do something sooner now for CHS.
Okay.
By the first meeting in October, Mr. Krantz, I think you can possibly have it together to be able to send out.
I'm going to shoot for even faster, but yes, sir.
All right. But October, first meeting in October, let's come back and see what we can do to send it out.
Correct.
For architect.
And when it's January 1st, previously, remember?
Yeah. If it was going to be January, we can actually send it out now. We were not going to do anything until then. But now we can send it out.
I don't see the downside, if there is, you can inform me, I don't see the downside of starting the, the planning and the design a little bit early.
No, it's not. It's not at all. And so, but I mean, now that we're separating it the way that we are, it actually gives us an advantage to go ahead and start with the CHS process. So we can actually start faster going this way.
So we're going to start faster.
Yes.
If it's an article.
We'll be starting on October 4th, October 1st.
We'll be start the planning of CHS even faster now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, fast.
Fast.
Yes, ma'am.
Faster.
Got that back there?
I'm sure you do not.
According to the law.
That's a good point.
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, it happens.
Something like that.
Any other questions to Mr. Krantz? Thank you, Mr. Krantz.
Okay. Next supplemental appropriation, we received grant funding for Bruin Academy services to homeless students, co-teaching, and vocational equipment. These grants were not part of our operating budget. We're asking you to authorize a request to the board of supervisors for a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $106,000, $106,138.
Samu.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the appropriation. And that will wrap up our business part of the meeting. The next one is unfinished business. Board members, are there any matters of unfinished business?
Okay. So there was discussion, and I don't know if it was during a meeting I missed, around our public address, and when that would stop. And as far as, folks already have to sign up, and then if you didn't get signed up before the meeting, then you're not allowed to speak. Where did we end up with that? Did I?
As I recall, Dr. Meyer, you sent out an email, you told us if anybody had any concern or whatever, on that policy to...
Yeah, we decided to stick to the policy.
Yeah, and no one...
Did we bring it back to the table, and have that discussion?
Yes, we did. And we also sent out, like Ms. Fargette said, an email that, you know...
Well, we don't do business by email.
No, but the point was, if you wanted additional changes or whatever, or you wanted discussion on the agenda, and no one brought anything forward after that.
I missed that. So I'm bringing it back. Because I would like to make sure that we're going to give the public every opportunity to speak. Because I still feel, just because someone didn't sign up before 7:00, if they have gotten here, and there's something they want to say to the board, they should be allowed to be heard.
Before we start the meeting, I will, I'm asking...
Not everybody gets here before the meeting starts. That's my concern.
Well, board members, we'll put it on the agenda and discuss next time around.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any new business, or any other unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing now, any announcements and information, board members? Hearing now.
Oh, Christiansburg Institute will be having their, I can't remember what it's called, this Saturday, at the Christiansburg Institute site.
It's like a...
It's a, yeah, a big party.
Hot party, I think.
So encourage everyone to come and see, and understand exactly what that campus was.
When is that, Saturday?
Saturday.
What time?
I'm not sure where.
It's a block party.
Block party.
Yeah, that's what it's called.
Yeah. Because it was truly a tragedy, what happened over there.
And you see upcoming school board meetings, board members. Any question regarding those? You'll see September, October, and all the way, November, actually, the 19 one, that's just before the, our VSPA conference. We're going to have, again, our legislators, legislator tours coming at Blacksburg High School for breakfast, so we can actually drive after. You may not have an evening meeting that day.
Ms. Drake, the MCEF grants will probably come on the November 5th meeting. Just to give you a heads up.
And if you don't have any other questions or information, we are ready to enter the closed session. Our next order of business is closed session, may have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter and one financial matter, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia.
Same here.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session.